Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, April the 6th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session and Public Hearing on the Budget for our Fiscal Year 2015 and 2016. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Board members, before we get started, I'd like to introduce Brian Heinz, who is our Resource Officer for Northwest Middle School. Mr. Heinz, thank you for coming out tonight and serving us. We appreciate all that you do for our schools. Also, Board members, as you will notice, Ms. Carpenter is absent. She wasn't feeling well. She won't be with us tonight, so just wanted you to be aware that she won't be in tonight. But she did ask that we have one of our items moved to an action item, and I'll get to that later on. All right, so without further ado, let's talk about the adopting the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Harrison, need a second?
Second.
Mr. Harrison and Mr. Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we have adopted the agenda. Now we will begin the open public hearing for input on the Cabarrus County Schools Budget for Fiscal Year 2015 and 2016. I need a motion to begin that hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Furr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we are now in the public hearing. And the public hearing was advertised in the Charlotte Observer and in the Independent Tribune on Sunday, March 29th, and on Sunday, April the 5th. The hearing notice was also posted on the CCS website on Monday, March 16th. At this point, we do not have any speakers. So Board members, if, before we move to close it, I will just read that speakers will be called by the Board Chair to approach the podium to address the Board regarding the 2014-15 budget for Cabarrus County Schools. And individuals have the opportunity to speak for three minutes, and persons speaking on behalf of a group may speak for five minutes. There are no speakers tonight, so I'm entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
Can we mention to the public where they can find the budget? On the website.
Is that, I didn't, you want to mention that, Mr. Walter?
Yes, yes. I listed them in the hearing announcement, so if they want information on the budget, you can find it on our website.
Yep.
The budget page.
On the budget page under Finance. Okay. Now, entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Phillips?
Second.
Mr. Powell? All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. That moves us to our report section, and we'll begin with the Odell Elementary School Boundary Lines. Dr. Lauder will be presenting to us. Board members, if you remember, we spoke about this, I believe, last summer and tabled this to this year to assess some of the traffic conditions as school opened up. So now, Dr. Lauder will come to us with some results. Him and Ms. Gomez are there in front of us. Thank you.
Yes, and I appreciate Ms. Gomez being here with us tonight as our demographic planner. We did go through a process last year where we looked at what the boundaries for the new Odell K-2 and 3-5 schools would look like, and then had a public hearing for that and got feedback on that, and then ultimately, I think, decided to hold until now when we've come back up to review the, those recommendations. We got our student assignment committee back together again. Mr. Walter is the Board Representative with that group. It's made up of about seven or eight people. It has Mr. Burnett as our construction person to work on that. There were two transportation representatives, Robert Klutz, who is, works with Drivers Ed now, but who has a long history of working with student demographics and transportation that he's worked in, and reviewed all of our information. And in essence, after looking at that information again, the proposal that we have is essentially the same proposal that we had last year. We were trying to not disrupt, to disrupt as few neighborhoods as possible and to come up with lines that were geographically intuitive, that seemed like pretty natural lines. And we felt like that was the case. We did make one last change. The proposal last year did have approximately 100 students or so coming out of Wyancoff and going into the Boger area. And because there's so much information about Royal Oaks, and I know there's even a proposal that you guys are still looking at with Royal Oaks, we pretty much decided maybe the best thing to do was to take that Wyancoff part of the proposal out. Because if you're going to do something different with more students, or even with the same amount of students with Royal Oaks, Wyancoff obviously bumps right up to that. So we didn't know if it was a great idea to move 100 students out and then two years later possibly move them again. So this way, you would still have some flexibility to move that around. And if you look at one of our PDFs here, just has the number of students. Right now, Boger currently has 795 students. Cox Mill has 1,149 students, and Odell has 923. And in the proposed plan, Boger would go down to 616 students. Cox Mill Elementary School would be around 890, and Odell would be 1,361. But remember, that's essentially two schools, so two schools that are roughly 700 students that it would go down to when we opened. Boger does go down low in that situation. That was one of the reasons originally we had Wyancoff in. But according to our permit information and building information, Boger actually has the highest number right now of possible homes being built and permits that are being issued, which is not necessarily what people would think at first time. But right now, we have, I think, 508 students that are, that the plan sheet we get saying could be generated in the next two or three years in Boger, which is quite a few now. Whether or not they're actually sitting there two years from now or four years from now is an open-ended question. But there are a lot of students generated from what we have currently for Boger. So at this point, again, we, it's a very similar presentation, except for the Wyancoff part. We know we answered a lot of questions for that. It's certainly something that we're willing to now try to take your questions and try to answer if you have very specific questions or something that doesn't make sense to you intuitively. But again, when we looked at it, it seemed like the easiest way to get the right amount of students and the least disruptive way. But obviously, no matter what plan you come up with, we are going to be changing some student schools to alleviate crowding.
Thank you, Dr. Lauder. Excuse me. Board members, have you taken time to look through this and have you generated any questions? Anyone would like to begin? Dr. Phillips?
So, Dr. Lauder, perhaps you could just summarize what the thoughts were in the committee in terms of how many students you're moving out of the Cox Mill area particularly. I understand what you're trying to do at Boger, but with Cox Mill, it looks like you're going from 1,149, does it say, to under 8, let's see, 890?
Right.
So is that, that's about 260 students. So what, is that the right number to move? What's behind that particular decision?
So I think our goal, again, was to move students out so we would get the Cox Mill down to a number that we're very, that we're comfortable with in size, and we thought that number is also to, we talked about the first time we presented this, to get it roughly down to 85% capacity, so there would be 15% that could still move in and grow because we are in a very highly populated area that is going to grow some. And, you know, you certainly could say, five years from now, will there be room there? Well, it depends on how quickly some of the homes grow and where exactly they come from and how many school-aged student they do. But with our predictions, you know, there are going to be more people that move in. So trying to get the right amount, again, around 85%, you could go lower than that and get it to 80, it could be somewhere different. But when you do that, when you grab a neighborhood, you may get it to 85%. And then the next closest neighborhood may be a neighborhood that has 200 students in it. So now, it would go down considerably. So I think 85% is a good place to be based on the amount of students that we have, but, and it's a number that gets us an amount of students that is not, is pulling as few neighborhoods as possible, I think, is what we tried to do. Now, again, that changes a little bit each year with what's come in, and even that Boger information with permits is a little bit different than it was last year. That speeds up and slows down, slows down depending on how fast it can be done. So I believe with the information we have now, again, intuitively, it's, it makes a lot of sense geographically, but there are certainly tweaks that we can look at if you would like us to.
Okay. Just, I'll just follow up with that. I was looking at the numbers that were provided in the 10-year plan presentation, and it does show that the, basically, school capacity for Cox Mill, considering everything that they've got there, is 1,092. And then it shows that for the potential permits for the neighborhoods that have already been approved, we could have another 202 students. So if we take those 202 students and add them to the, what is it, 890, it magically comes out to 1,092, which is the stated capacity of the school. So I guess that's, that's, that's pretty good. However, if I do that same type of analysis for Odell, I think we're going to be overcrowded in Odell in the not-too-distant future. And so one of the things I'm leery about is moving students from Boger into Odell only to have to in a few years say, oh, you've got to go back to Boger.
And I know I don't have a microphone, but I would say that the area that we spend a lot of time on as a group, is I think the area you're talking about here, this area, which we don't, we shouldn't have that number, we could actually go pull, I think it's about 70 students, 65 to 70 students in this area. You could leave these students at Boger, and it would be about 70 more students at Boger, and it would give 70 more seats here. The reason we discussed that for a while is because if you live right here, you can, you can see the school from your home. And so the people that live here are so close to that geographically that we had a hard time with, do we want to send these people that can see the school out of their front door five miles back over this way? It tends not to be real popular, but it certainly is something that could go either way. We went back and forth to say, should we go ahead and move those students over to Boger? Part of the reason we didn't is because of proximity. The other reason is because, again, students and permits is actually pretty big in Boger, but that's down the road right now. So that's something I think our committee would say, if the school board thinks that's a good decision to move, we'd gladly do that because it's not, I mean, for the reason that you said.
But they would, we would be sending a lot of students that are geographically closer to Odell in the other direction. And so in the end, we decided not to do that. But again, something that we probably spent as much time on as anything in hashing out because of the very point that you're making.
I think a couple of things that would help me in the decision, maybe if you could just give us the data of how many students are in that, that movement from Boger that live north of 73, how many live south of 73? And then the other thing I'd be interested in is for the, this, this list which was provided to us at the, at the retreat. It basically, I have written down here, most up-to-date data. It's basically the units that have been approved, how many units have been issued, units remaining, and then the expected students that would come from those units. And it says for Odell, 538. I would be interested in knowing, of those 538, how many are for subdivisions that are actively building today? Because that would give me more of a sense of what we would be expecting.
Eight, eight subdivisions of what you just said are actively building today.
Okay, so if you could kind of help me, I can go back to the data that was provided at the retreat, but just let me know what those.
So we'll get the total number, north of 73, south of 73, and then we'll try to update this with that amount, and we can send that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison?
Just a quick question. Again, thank you all for your work and your kind of meticulous details about this. But of course, this consideration has been in the hopper, so to speak, for the last year or more. There's been a tremendous amount of public input a year ago and possibly still being some input to be added in the near future. But can you please go into some detail about the extent to which public input that's already been provided, especially last year, especially even into September and October, when I received spreadsheets from at least one individual's, you know, personal research into how it would affect the area and/or his community, as I recall? But can you please go into some detail, please, about, your best recollection about how public input has been baked into the current consideration?
Sure. So last year, when we presented this the first time, we had a, well, we had obviously some people that emailed and called that we talked to, and then we had a public hearing that was about two hours long here, that had about, we had about 30 speakers. We captured all the information that they were getting to summarize, and we can, we sent that to the Board members at the time, but we have that, I have that document that I can still send you, which was essentially a summary. To be quite honest, everybody, I called everybody that signed up to speak that I could get ahold of, and I ended up talking to about 25 of the 30. Extremely polite, nice group of parents and/or a couple students that we talked to who, you know, have an attachment to their school and have, you know, don't want to switch schools, but couldn't have been any more nice about how they objected. And so when we met with them to discuss, they gave us their concerns. Most of them, about half of them spoke at the meeting. Again, we tried to capture that. Primarily, there were two neighborhoods that people came to speak from at that meeting, but we had two or three other neighbors, so five or six that were represented. And one individual who did some pretty extensive mapping, I actually met with that same individual. I think we're talking about the same person, but I won't say his name in case he doesn't want us to. Again, extremely nice man who's tried to do lots of work in the area that he said, I met with him about two or three weeks ago and told him that this would be coming back up. He actually had a demonstration, I emailed it to you guys, again, from the perspective of his student and what he was looking at. But, so I feel like that we've, we've certainly tried to get public input. We certainly can, again, depending on what the Board wants us to do. And, and got very, you know, nice feedback about people who had some concerns about their children changing schools, which is always a level of anxiety. But in a growing area, probably is something that we're going to be doing some more of as we redistrict. So, and that is all that I heard. I have not heard from, from any groups now, except for the man that I said that I mentioned. But obviously, as we open this up, we may get some more feedback, or we could hear from a neighborhood that we didn't hear from the first time.
So the process is still open?
Oh, sure, yeah.
And, and I just want to say I congratulate you and I endorse your due diligence. I don't know what I'm voting on yet.
Right.
Or how I'm voting, but I endorse your efforts and your meticulous work and your due diligence to date. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, Dr. Lauder, I've got a question for you. Out of that group, you said about 70 that could go either way. Have they, what, what has been that community's opinion?
Yeah, we did not hear much from that group. We did hear from, at the public hearing, there was one mother who came and lives in that area that we just highlighted, and she said, I would really, you know, I just got moved not too long ago in Boger opened. I would really like to be able to stay. If I provide my own transportation, can I do that? And that was put on the table for, you know, to some degree for that group, just to say, is that something we wanted to entertain because they could go either way if they wanted to stay at Boger? And so that would be something I assume that the Board would decide, but, but certainly could be something that would not be disruptive in that area if that's what they wanted to do.
Yeah, and I want to tell you guys, I appreciate you guys waiting till Vince and I got on the Board to make this decision. But, you know, Carol and I, I guess, are the only two Board members that's got experience with, with redistricting, and it's honestly, it's going to be the toughest thing you'll ever have to do. But the group here always, I mean, as you can tell, they do their homework. And, and I think every time we've redistricted in the past, which was quite often when I was on the Board before, we, the feedback we got from the parents, six months later or a year later, they, they were upset at first, but it turned out to be, they were completely satisfied with the move. But this is, like I said, this is the toughest thing we have to do, but as, as you can tell, there's a lot of thought, and there's a, and the thing too, there's a lot of experience. I don't know how long Mr. Klutz has been doing this, but I know quite a long time. And, so we appreciate you guys doing what you do.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I was, I've been on this committee, and there is an awful lot of work that goes in, into it. But one of the reasons why we're doing this is so we can have additional public input. That's why this is not an action item for next week. We're not announcing this and making a decision, you know, next week. We have a month here to prevent, to get additional feedback on what this new plan is. Part of, I guess, the question of why we delayed it was the charter schools. Did you want to address the impact that we saw with the charter school at all?
Oh, I can, very briefly, and Ms. Klutz can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that we had a large charter school open here, and when that opened, we were a little bit questioning the impact that it would have. But after the first year that it opened, because it took a larger group of students, each year after that, it's been a much smaller group. So it's not something that we really feel like alters this or our projections to some degree. We know that number, and it's been not disruptive after the first year.
It didn't make as big of impact as we initially thought it might. Let's see. We talked, I guess, a little bit about, I don't know if we want to discuss that at this point, but you have a, there's a webpage that we have on, is it still up that has information on the school?
I'm not 100% sure if we have it up now because we may have had this meeting, but we can certainly put these maps and anything back up. Last time, we also took the maps out to, to each one of the schools that was affected and kind of put this up in the lobby, and we can certainly do that again.
There's been some change to the timetable though, as well, on construction, is that right? Or moving?
Yes, I think that's right.
The effective date for this would still be, what, August?
Yeah, I think when we were presenting the last time, and that may be a good point, that when we were presenting the last time, it was still up in the air as to whether the school would open in the middle of the year and whether we would move students, for example, out of Cox Mill into that new facility. And my understanding now is the plan is not to do that. We would not pull students out of Cox Mill mid-year for a lot of the reasons that we've discussed. So that was on the table for the public hearing, and it was a concern that a lot of people have. And I think because of the construction timeline, we've ultimately decided now, no, this would just be opening at the beginning of the 2016 school year.
Okay. And the other things that were still on the table about the foreign language, the Chinese, that was one of the concerns that parents had had, that it's not available there at Odell.
Yeah, and I don't want to misspeak on that, but I know that Dr. Van Hugle, they looked at that information, he's coming up, he can speak better educated about that. So both Odell and Cox Mill will have Chinese next, the next school year.
So that does address that issue.
Correct.
And the other issue that we had talked about briefly is the transition, is you don't want your child to go to one school, and next year, another school, another school. There were some things that we could possibly do to help alleviate some of that.
Yeah, I do think you're, that you will hear, if you haven't already heard, some, some parents who may start at Cox Mill this coming year, for example, in a kindergarten class, and then, just as an example, and then the following year would have to move to the K-2 school and then go to 3-5. And ultimately, you know, they'll say they have to go to three different schools. Well, you do have a group that'll start kindergarten, there's really no way to avoid that. I think because we have introduced this K-2 and 3-5 concept, and it's pretty new, we haven't really had those schools, that the idea of moving from the K-2 school to the 3-5 school is really not the same thing as changing schools, because you're moving with your peer group. You are moving facilities, but everybody that attends Odell going forward will be K-2 in one facility and a mile down the road going there. We did look at some other things which are possible alternatives, which is looping students. And so sometimes, at all of our schools, that sometimes you may have a second grade teacher, and then you have the same teacher for third grade. That's not necessarily something that I think we could promise at this point, but it's always an alternative and things to look at to make that transition better. From what we know about other K-2 and 3-5s, there's not a major transition problem when they change facilities, because again, they're not, they're not changing anything except the building. All the students they go to school with are moving with them to another. So nobody's not in the same boat when they move a mile down the road. But it is something new and something that parents probably have some questions about and a little anxiety about because it's a new concept for us.
Okay, and then just on my concern, I'm still a little bit on the minority about moving, I think, I'm concerned about Boger because, I mean, our capacity there is 851 students, and we're dropping that substantially under the capacity. But I do understand we have to make some decisions on Royal Oaks, and that is going to have a, potentially have an impact, but I don't think it would really affect, I think we should have went with the same, should still consider helping fill some of those seats. I mean, I, you know, growth is there, but it's, it's a big drop in, initially.
And we could, the Wyancoff position that we mentioned before could still be on the table. We just thought because so much is going on now with Royal Oaks, maybe we don't want to touch that group. But that's certainly something that's, we've presented before, so the information's all there. If that's something you guys want us to include, we can certainly do that.
Thank you for your work.
Anybody else? I have a couple of questions, clarifying questions. You said right now with the new information that you got on the Boger is, you expect how many new students to go?
508 students is, is the latest information that we have. Now, remember, that's a very moving target, and it's always a guess, but it is a number that's higher than we would have thought.
And that's dramatic, and that is on the new boundaries, based on the new boundaries in this study, 508, eight additional students to the 616 that you already, that you're having after we do the redistricting.
Right. That's actually current boundaries is what we have 508 for now.
Okay. But I'm saying, we're going to move a group of students that are currently in Boger at the farms and then over there by the lake.
That's right.
And down through the Rollingwood Forest neighborhood, we'll move those back to Odell. Would that number still be about 548?
Yeah, it'll, it, with all that taken into account, it's more like 400 students.
So that would put us at 1,000-plus students at Boger without, with, in the, in the new proposed boundaries.
That's right.
And that includes the apartments that are going up over by?
Target.
By the Afton Ridge area.
Yeah, we're, and I know this gets a little confusing, but we're basing that on ones that have actually pulled permits, and so it actually could be more than that because their existing permits that haven't been pulled, but they're coming, if that makes any sense.
Okay. All right. But suffice it to say that if the permits pan out at the rate we're going right now, Boger in a, in a couple of years could be at, near its capacity very quickly.
Right. That's right. And again, that's preliminary information. It can change, but that's the information we have today.
Now, do you know what percentage is multifamily in the, in those numbers?
Yes, so if we, of the 500 students, it's about 50, and of the permits that are coming that not necessarily have been pulled, it's about 70. So about 10% of those are multifamily.
Okay. Well, this is only the very first of probably many redistrictings in the next several years. So I want to warn our public that our schools are, are getting very full. Our commissioners are dealing with the possibilities of building new classrooms to accommodate the growth, but at the same time, those classrooms may not get here as fast as we'd like, and we'll have to do some measures to protect ourselves against that growth. So as we go forward, this will be one, and you heard us allude, you heard Mr. Walter allude to Wyancoff and Royal Oaks, and so there's still other options available to us that we'll have to do with some other districts. This group will be taken care of, and we hopefully, we won't have to revisit this for a while. And, but we'll be going around the county, doing more of this type of activity as we go forward to figure out how to equalize our classroom space to the buildings that we have. Mr. Powell, I seek you would like to talk?
Yes, sir. The only thing I have to add to this is that just several years ago, I was the Assistant Principal of Instruction as of two months when the Patriots was open, and that was a very contentious redistricting issue around the county. And maybe Tim was on the Board and, and had some very specific feedback regarding that. But I can tell you, once that school opened and the excitement of a brand-new school and a new staff, and, you know, we merged three, three schools into one, and then, you know, almost every elementary school in the district had a teacher that contributed to that staff. And it was exciting, and, and, you know, I would say that all of the, the of the, the apprehension about the redist, redistricting just was an afterthought after students and parents got in the building. And, you know, Mr. Hall did a wonderful job at that point, but it's all about the people. And so I, I feel like, um, you know, I've gone through it. I actually had a child that was redistricted to that school as well. And, um, once you get in the building and, and they kind of see the, the newness of the new school and, and the excitement, I think things will be just fine.
Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, I didn't want to hog. I forgive everybody else that did. I, I agree with Vince. I, I think, uh, the, the previous school board, somebody, it made the, the comment that this district has a lot of experience in, uh, adding new schools. And they know the best practices of how to make, uh, children feel, um, comfortable in, in a new environment. So, so that, that hopefully is a reassurance for parents. I do have some specific questions. So in the, in the, um, the material that was provided to us in the 10-year plan, it states that the program capacity of the current Odell is 925 students. I believe that's going to drop when it is reconfigured as a K-2 school. So what I'd be interested in is what's going to be the new program capacity of, uh, basically the combined, uh, Odell primary and elementary schools.
Yeah, the, the two capacities we have listed now are 777 and 792.
777.
772, I'm sorry. 777 and 772.
772. So about 1,500 or so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Um, the next question I had, uh, kind of feeding off of what Vince just mentioned about drawing teachers, uh, where, how will the teachers for the, uh, the new Odell school or for the expanded population of the two Odell schools, how will those teachers be selected?
Yeah. Um, so always in this situation, there are, um, there are, you know that Odell will be affected. We know that Boger will be affected. And, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Jones to jump up here and correct me if I'm wrong. But we know Cox Mill, Boger and Odell will be affected. So what tends to happen is you, you take the situation with those things. Some of those are alleviated by retirements or people move. And then we know how many positions are left. And the principal, whoever the principal is that's hired of the school, works with these other schools that are affected. So they're working with Boger, with Cox Mill to say, um, you know, if I work at Odell now and I'm 3-5, then I know there's a good chance I may just move over. But as we absorb from other schools and after we've done retirements and resignations or whatever it done, then those two are working together along with HR representatives to, to be fair and, and do that as much as possible. So it's need, if you need the person and then sometimes tenure. But there's a, a formula that's pretty specific that says, here's how we do that. Um, as a general rule, that's been a pretty, um, it's worked well when schools have been affected. And Ms. Moore can speak to that to say, hey, we all have to work together to figure out, do I have two fifth grade teachers and how we spread them out. So I know that's a very general answer, but it really will get down to depend, how many positions are, do we still need to move when we know that people have left or retired? And then they work together to, to be as fair as possible. And, but the most important thing is to meet the needs of all the students.
Okay. Um, and my final question, um, relates to, you, you brought up the, this scenario where, uh, where a student could potentially be in three different school buildings in three years. And I think that's one of the most, um, compelling concerns that I've heard from parents. I mean, there's also the concern that, well, my child likes the school there and I will have to stay there.
Right.
And unfortunately, somebody's going to have to move. So whether it's, you know, one neighborhood or another, we will be facing that. But the, uh, the concern of going, you know, first grade in, in, let's say Cox Mill, second grade at Odell Primary and then third grade at Odell Elementary, uh, while, while I agree with you that there's a big difference between having to move from one school and leaving behind your friends and going to another school, then having all of your classmates move together to a new building, um, I, I think that it's still causing some angst among parents. And so I'm wondering if you would consider, uh, giving those rising second graders the same option that we, we usually give to rising fifth graders. That say, well, if your parents can provide transportation to your old school, you can stay that, you know, one more year at your old school. So that way it reduces the number of, um, transitions that you have to go through.
Yeah. And I would say in, in, uh, basing on the past, because obviously this has not been the recommendation. I think usually, um, we have tried to limit as many of those exceptions as you can make because it just delays the inevitable of moving and acclimating to that school. Because again, if you, if you move in second grade, you now establish a peer group in first or second grade that you're going to move up with. If you wait to do that, you now have waited a year or two before you now still have to move over and establish with that peer group, but now it's waiting until third grade. Um, so I think it, that angst that we've talked about, parents will have that. And then sometimes if you permit that one, then it's, well, can my siblings do, you know, I have a sibling and I'd like to do the same thing. Um, again, all coming from the right place. These are parents who are attached to the school. We want our parents to have a relationship with the school. But it tends to make that a less clean break. And, um, I think in the end can actually make it more difficult, even though that's not necessarily what the parents will say. But at the end of the day, um, the school board makes a decision. And if you guys said we could do that, it could be, uh, very difficult for transportation. That's where you run into problems, I think, um, because you would have X amount that went one way and X another. So if you did that, you may have to qualify that by providing transportation. And, and we would want the Transportation Department to give us an estimate of what that would look like. And we can certainly have them do that if that's an option that you guys want to entertain.
Any more comments? Well, being none, I'll let them sit down. Board members, we will be seeing this some more and having more discussions about this. So, uh, we've finished this, this report. And now Ms. Klutz will come up and give us an update on the budget for 2015, 16.
Good evening. I'm getting situated here. So this is our third, um, budget update. And just, um, we've had, um, most of our budget information shared with you already. And, um, thanks to Mr. Walter, we, um, changed the, the budget public hearing so that the public could hear the majority of the, the, uh, budget information. Oh, sorry, did I do that? Um, be, before we, um, adopted a budget next week. So on the 13th, we anticipate adopting a budget. So you've had most of it before you. And at this time, normally, we would have more information from the state, but just want to point out that, um, normally I would have the governor's recommendation. A lot of times I would have the House and the Senate. And we would kind of be going back and forth and I would be giving you an update on that. Um, just kind of to let you know that the state's been fairly quiet, um, right now. And so we have very little information. Um, but there was a House bill that was filed that, um, I just want to bring to your attention, House Bill, um, 557. And that would impact us if that, that bill passed. That bill takes, um, you'll recall several years ago when we were able to split out our Fund Two into two different funds, a Fund Two and a Fund Eight. Um, and so we were able to separate, um, things like grants, indirect costs and things like that, so that the charter schools do not get a per pupil allocation of those funds. Um, because those are funds that we specifically go after those grants. Those are indirect costs. Those are types of things that, that are not state allocations, um, that they are local allocations that they should not, um, get their portion of. And so this bill introduces the idea that they would be able to get, um, more of those funds. We would now move those over from Fund Eight to Fund Two. And I did just a real quick calculation on that. That would move about 1.8 million dollars into Fund Two. And that could potentially take about $75,000 to $100,000 out of our local budget that we would then have to send over to char, charter schools in addition to what we are currently sending. And of course, that's a, an, a reoccurring expense and it would just build every year. The, the more students that we send, the more money we would send. It would increase the per pupil allocation that we send with each student.
Is it all right if I ask you a question?
Sure.
You noted that, uh, grants would be covered under this.
Grants is, grants go in Fund Eight. They are not trying to include grants in, in this bill.
In this legislation.
Right, in this legislation. Um, but that's the type of thing that goes in Fund Eight. But they are trying to separate some of the things that go in Fund Eight out.
Right. And you said today, we talked a little bit about, and you were talking off the top of your head, and you said something about Medicaid?
Yeah, indirect costs, Medicaid. Um, yeah, I just tried to pull some of the things that we have. Um, sales tax refunds, um, uh, the rental for school property, things like that, um, could potentially come out. Um, those types of things that, that now we do not share with charter schools. We could potentially be required to then share those things.
So you said about 1.8 million, which is averaging about $600 per student, that we would lose if the county decided not to compensate us for that? Or is that, or is it $60 per student?
It was about $60.
$60 a student?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay. But that's just, um, an update on the state. Um, not hearing a lot from that. And when we do get information on the state, we'll update you on that. Okay. So now I'd like to update you on the information that was shared with you on March the 19th. We had a, a fairly long, um, session and we had some follow-up items. So I'd like to go over those with you. Um, so one of the items that we reviewed was our non-facilities capital outlay budget. Um, we reviewed those items. You changed a couple of the priorities. Um, and I made some notes here on this page if you want to follow along. Um, you asked to move the floor lift systems from seven to five. We did that. You asked about, uh, the return on investment of purchasing all the floor lifts at one time versus one per year. We gave you some, some data on that. Um, and you can see basically the ROI is about 13.85, four years. So it's, it would take a, a significant amount of time to return that investment to buy them in the first year, in one year. And I think that's what you were wanting to know. Um, there's some other information there, just, um, increased shop safety and performance boosting activity, other reasons to do it rather than just a return on investment. And I know those, you're aware of those and those are good reasons to do that. Um, you would also, um, a board member wanted us to consider doing an RFQ for cleaning the band uniforms. Um, and we're certainly looking into that. Chris White is checking on that for us to do at the school level or at the system level, bring them in at the school. Um, we also had a question about the mileage for activity buses. And we have, um, provided you with that information. And so all that information, um, is in your packet and provided to you. Okay. Do you have any questions on the follow-up items for those particular items? Okay. So we'll go to the technology, um, request. And at the, at the bottom of that document, you'll see that we had some questions on the InfoSnap software. And Matthew was not here that day, but he's here today to answer any questions that you have. We've also provided some supporting documentation that we sent you in advance. Um, and so I'm not going to try to answer the questions. I'll just let Matthew come up because he has the most knowledge about that. Thank you, Matthew. The information that was provided in your packet, do you have other specific questions or did that answer your questions? Or do you need Matthew?
I guess, so, so one of the concerns that was brought up was where will this data on students from, when parents enter it, where will it be stored and who owns it? And so maybe you could just say what, what you found out and whether you're comfortable with what you found out.
Very, very comfortable with what I found out. Um, also had, uh, a chance for Sarah to review the information. It does stay on their servers. Um, however, they have a very tight, uh, protection policy around student information. We do own that information. They don't, they'll never send it out without us saying, you send it here or do this with it. Um, we own it. We control it.
Thank you, Matthew.
All right. Anyone else, other questions on InfoSnap?
I, I think the other concern was whether the data, uh, could be integrated in with?
Power School.
Power School, thank you. What, what did you find out about that?
Yeah, we did a lot of research around that one, actually. Um, when you're enrolling a brand new student, there are required fields that still have to be entered by a person in order to get the student's UID, the unique identifier. Once you have that information, the rest of the data, if you will, is automatically imported into Power School. I also checked to make sure that that was an ongoing process and not just at kindergarten registration as an example. And it is something that's ongoing throughout the year with any new enrollee.
So basically as the student's record gets updated, say a new address or new phone number or new contact information, once you've gotten the new, unique identifier for the student, after that, regardless of what year they're in, that would automatically get transferred over into Power School through the InfoSnap process?
Yes. And at the beginning of every year, they have a student information validation process essentially. You, uh, send this link out to parents. Parents, uh, go into InfoSnap. They see all of the information that they have on their child, phone number, address, whatever. Um, and they can change any of that information. However, the system is tracking all of the changes. So then the data manager will get a report and it highlights only what was changed, which makes that process a whole lot easier. Cause normally you get back, you know, stacks and you're kind of looking to see what was changed, that kind of thing. Um, here, the report just highlights what's been changed. The data manager can then validate those changes, feel comfortable with them and then click submit. Um, if there's a change in address, obviously that's going to require a communication back with the parent and proof of domicile, um, changes.
Let me try to explain this. You'll probably know what I mean, or certainly, uh, Dr. Probst would. Um, do you know if on the staff of the InfoSnap group, um, they're, not just their help desk, but their security, um, staff, um, do you know if they are certified? What, uh, what, there are several different ones, but one of them is called CISSP, which is a computer information, security specialist type of, uh, certification. And, um, so my question is, are those people on staff with InfoSnap? Or are those people offshored somehow in a contractual relationship with, um, InfoSnap? That would tell me something about how serious they are about security and student information. If either of those questions were no, I, I wouldn't feel terribly comfortable with their, their, their statements that they take, uh, security seriously unless they hadn't made that investment in their own staff. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, uh, Dr. Probst, but I think you know what I mean by, by those things. If you could speak to it, I'd appreciate, uh, any insights you can offer.
I can tell you right now, we have absolutely no idea what their certifications are, but that's something we can call the company and ask those to provide the certifications.
Are those intelligent questions to ask?
Yes.
I mean, are they valid questions to ask?
Yes.
And, and should be or could?
Absolutely.
Be, be pinned down?
No, but it, it's not uncommon to call vendors and ask for the certifications of the employees that would be managing the accounts.
If half their staff is off on the other side of the globe somewhere, that tells me one thing. And if they don't have staff who are not, um, security professionals, um, that tells me another thing. And I would be, um, I would be appreciative of knowing that.
Yes, sir. We can look into it.
Yeah. They know that we're dialoguing about this today. So I'll have that answer to you probably within the next five minutes.
Have one question. Um, will ConnectEd be able to communicate with InfoSnap? Because I know that one of the biggest frustrations from middle school and high school is being able to get accurate phone numbers. And ConnectEd gives, um, a, a printout or reading of phone numbers that are not correct or disconnected, et cetera. But if they communicate, then that would, uh, take that frustration away from high school and middle school administrators.
Yeah. InfoSnap does not connect to Blackboard Connect, um, at this time. I can tell you, however, with the absence phone I can tell you, however, with the absence phone calls, that Brian, through our accountability offices, has developed an update retrieval from PowerSchool into Blackboard Connect, and that happens within 24 to 48 hours after a phone number has been changed in PowerSchool. That took, that took weeks to develop, to say that as simple as possible. So we've only done it with attendance phone calls. However, we do have the ability to carry that to the whole system. It's just a time where we need to allow him another couple of weeks to develop that for the other types of phone calls.
Sorry to beat a dead horse, but I'll ask one other question. In our service-level agreement with InfoSnap, if there is a breach of student confidentiality and student data, how is that handled? And are there monetary fines and considerations that InfoSnap would need to forego? Should there be such breaches of that data? I'm trying to choose my words right, so I'm just asking if there are teeth in the SLA with InfoSnap? Not, will all fix it and be okay with each other? I'm asking if there are true...
Fines.
Legal ramifications that have material impact between ourselves? And maybe you can answer that as well later on at a future date.
Yeah, I don't recall, I was looking more around what was the security of the data, and who owned it, and that sort of thing, but I can certainly ask. Kelly had just made a note here about asking if they're bonded. So we'll check that information and see what kind of ramifications there would be if there was a breach in student data and information.
Could we transfer our liability over to InfoSnap for security breaches through that contract? So that liability sits with them instead of us if they breach versus us breaching?
There are a whole host of things we could do with the contract, once we take a look at it. It's been a little over a year since we looked at a proposed contract from InfoSnap. So what we'd want to get is get their standard contract today and take a look at it, and that is something we could look into doing and seeing exactly what type of indemnification provisions are in there for us.
Dr. Phillips?
So, Matthew, you mentioned that currently, at the beginning of the year, the data manager gets a whole stack of the forms that the parents have filled out, and then they have to cross-check to see if anything's changed, whereas InfoSnap would allow that to be automated. Have you made any sort of calculations as to how much time, how many staff hours that would save?
Well, not with that particular process, but I can tell you that when you have a new enrollee, that it takes 45 minutes to, an hour and 15 minutes, to complete the process. Just the paper data entering process for one student. So when you think about enrolling an entire kindergarten class across the system at all of our elementary schools, I haven't calculated those total hours, but you're looking at many, many man-hours of work that would be saved. And then you multiply that times the man-hours for every time a new student walks in the building, it would be many, many man-hours saved. I could certainly calculate an estimation based on the kindergarten class and number of enrollees in a typical year.
Are you proposing to cut data entry hours for, because of the savings from InfoSnap?
No, I'm not.
Is that an option?
Is it an option? There's always that option, but I'm not proposing it simply because, and you may know this from being at the school level, most of our data managers, it's not their only role, especially in our smaller schools. Now, in our larger schools, it really is their only role, and she probably needs overtime. So by saving some time, she may be able to kind of stay on top of it. But most of our administrators certainly can fill the roles of many, many folks. And we've had such cuts in our support staff at our school level. I wouldn't recommend any cuts. Maybe there's other opportunities and things they could pick up if the load got cut enough. But with our larger schools, it's really just going to be a matter of being able to stay on top of it.
All right, let's continue. Thank you, Matthew.
Okay, so that'll do it for the technology section, and we'll go on to our proposed operational expansion. And this one, I believe, is where we got a little slower. So I want to review the changes on this document, and then I believe where we left off is that you guys wanted to, and Ms. Carpenter, wanted to make some changes in the priority. So I want to review all the changes, and then I think we have the document in an Excel document so that Ed can move them as you see fit, and you can see them in the order that you want them by the end of the day. Okay? So I have noted that you wanted to increase the salary request from 10% and 1% to 15% and 1.5%. So I've made that adjustment, so that increased the request from a total of $1.1 million to $1.7 million. And in addition, you wanted those broken down between our teaching staff and our all other staff, so that those would be two separate votes. And so I've done that for you, so that's one and two. You can see those there. The next one was, or the next question or comment was to find out what the county is planning for their employees' pay increase for 2015-16. And they are planning a half a percent cost of living. In addition, they will have a merit plan with a max of 2.5%. So that is their current proposal.
Do you have a total on that pot? So a max of 2.5%, but...
Right, so it would just depend if, you know, I might give you 1%, and I might give Jeff 2.5%.
So they didn't allocate a certain amount in saying, within this total, the range is? Okay.
It's up to 2.5% for merit.
But basically, what they're saying is they're going to do a half a percent overall increase, and the range of that could be as low as zero to as high as 2.5 or 3?
Well, everyone gets a half.
Oh, everybody's going to get a flat half, and then there's merit.
You could get three. If you were a good performer, the best performer, you could get three. You get 2.5 and 1/2.
So everyone will get a flat half, but what is their average increase?
I won't.
That's what I think, I think what we're saying is, if you're going to offer them a range of merit, now you've got this range, everybody gets a half, so we know the average is above a half, but somewhere between a half and...
Based on historical, is that what you want?
3% on merit, no. They've got to be raising salaries a certain percentage to get to this median point, which is above a half a percent.
So you don't want it based on historical? So if I'm doing Chris's evaluation, then I'm going to give him 1.5% based on his evaluation. So I don't know what I'm going to give him until I give him his evaluation.
Right, I understand, but they're using a bell-shaped curve for this process. They've got a pot of money, and they're going to increase this pot of money by some percentage. So they're going to increase the average annual salary of every employee by a half a percent. Then they've got the merit that they're putting on top of that half a percent, and that range could go anywhere from 0 to 3%. But that pot of money's going to grow at some percentage point. And that's what I was wondering, what that pot of money is going to grow at? Because that's basically what they're averaging for their employees, plus the half percent.
I'll ask them what their average merit is, because that's what you want to know.
That's what it sounds like they're trying to do, if they're doing these other...
They've got to be putting some numerical number in their lying item for that.
What are they budgeting for that?
What is their budget? What's that based on?
I'm sure they're not budgeting 2.5% for every employee, so...
I'm sure they're not. I'll find out. Okay, okay, so we have that. The next one was to break out the teachers, the teacher allotment into elementary, middle, and high schools, we've done that. Then you wanted a breakout of the middle school assistant principal positions between at-risk and growth. And then we wanted, we had some questions on scanning of student alumni records. One of the questions was, can the alumni records be destroyed after scan? Again, we have Matthew here to answer those questions. We also provided you some additional information in your handouts. Another question that you had was, how is the $620,000 in savings calculated? And so we updated the justification form to show you how that calculation was done. You want to come up for the 620? Destroy them?
Okay, sorry. I'm getting a response back from InfoSnap, so... For the destroying of records, and I've had quite a few conversations with Sarah about this, the current law does state that it should be in microfiche, so that poses a problem, obviously. I've been told from the Department of Archives, who visited us and took some of our records back to Archives, nothing that we had to hold on to. Although they may want some of those older records as well, but there's a process you have to follow in terms of getting official requests and all that kind of stuff, and you have to approve it for us to release those records, so we'll bring it back to you. But anyway, in the conversation with them, they also felt that that law was going to be changed soon, which I have heard from quite a few people. So I don't know when "soon" is, but in talking with them, they had shared that many states over the past few years have already made that shift in the law and felt that it was coming to North Carolina. So in my conversations with AIS, I asked about the destruction of records. They did share with me that there were districts destroying those records without microfilm right now. Their logic, not saying that we're going to do that, but their logic was that you can actually take the scanned records and turn it into microfilm later on if you want. So their logic was, well, if they really want microfilm later, we'll turn these into microfilm and give it to them. That's not the reasoning behind not destroying them, but they may or may not have talked to their lawyer like we did. I don't know. And I didn't ask for any district names, but they said about half of theirs have already destroyed their records without microfilm. And then the other half are doing both. In order to do microfilm, if that's something we were interested in doing, it costs about 50% of what it costs to scan. Also, they are willing at a reduced rate to basically charge us a dollar a box to store, should we decide to store them until a later date, which is, like most of our other pieces from AIS, a highly reduced cost for storage. We could also have them ship back to us and store them at some central location until we can destroy them.
Are we scanning current records when this group graduates? What will we do with their physical record?
I'm glad you asked that question. So there's two-part answer to that. The first part is, yes, we add that to our current need for scanning. And when you look at the, was it 16.5 years or something, how many years that went out this time? You'll see those additional records getting added annually to the cost. However, if we are able to use the CCPA agreement and get all of our current alumni records scanned, we bring in enough revenue to basically cover the cost of the graduating class. Now, with that said, I didn't want this to be this never-ending kind of expense that we have. So we are piloting an electronic cumulative record process, again, after having conversations with Sarah, at Harrisburg Elementary School with the incoming kindergarten class. If that works and goes well, which I'm hoping it will, then next year I would recommend that we would move that district-wide, and we would no longer keep paper cumulative files, it would all be electronic. So in the course of the next 13 years, we would no longer have to worry about that. All of our records would be electronic throughout. Does that...
Just to challenge you, what's the purpose of a pilot program at one school when just modern technology should convince us of the veracity of just going ahead and fast-tracking this thing? And just while you were thinking about that response. I have not heard the word "microfiche" since I was trying to do my English papers at Appalachian in 1975. But it's fascinating that we still have that stuff around.
Yeah, and it's fascinating that it's still a requirement. But again, soon, we expect that to be changed. As for taking in a pilot, there are processes that we need to make sure work and work efficiently. We want to establish a process that creates the electronic method, but is also a time saver. And we only have so much personnel. So for example, we have to come up with, where are these files going to be stored? How are they going to be stored? What are they going to be named? How are they going to be scanned? How is the scanning going to translate from the scanner, which is the copy machine, into these files? How are they going to be secure? How are we going to create permission rights within them? Also, although we don't have InfoSnap yet, we wanted to be able to make the process of registering as electronic as possible as well. We don't want to take someone who then has to fill out a paper copy of an enrollment form, scan that enrollment form, and make it electronic. So we also had to create an electronic enrollment form that had required fields, would populate directly into a spreadsheet, and then we would be able to import that data ourselves. Not as seamlessly as InfoSnap can do, but we can mass import certain pieces. And we don't have the capacity to do that across all the elementary schools for all the kindergartners yet. We hope after we live it, we can make it a little bit more efficient. We can work out the kinks and the bugs, and then we can hopefully do it across all of them. We are allowing the electronic enrollment piece at Cox Mill, because they have so many. And then we'll see if we can simplify that a little bit.
And I just advocated for speeding up the process. Now let me advocate for slowing down the process, because microfiche is highly flammable. And of course, we'd probably need a lot of procedures in place to do that work in a kind of fire-safe...
Yes.
Environment or room for the safety of the whole school. I mean, for obvious reasons, but just that it can't be taken out into the main office where there might be other concerns.
Yeah, so all of that, taking all that into consideration, exactly right. We want to be very safe, we want to be very methodical, we want to make sure that we're doing it right, so to speak, before we take it to all the elementary schools.
Thank you. Okay, so there were two additional items added, and you can see them on your screen. You do not have them on your board docs, so if you'll just take a look at your screen on the bottom. There is a request to add a provision to partially reimburse staff for coursework. And if I didn't get this exactly right, you can change it, to include provisionals, lateral entries, and higher-degree programs. And some of you may recall, well, those of us who've been here a long time know that we used to reimburse teachers who would get higher education, go for their higher education programs, and that stopped when we cut the budget, just like everything else. And so there was a request to, and we did, at the time, we did a 50% reimbursement. And so this could be structured, you know, any way that you want to. You could do a flat 200, 300, or you could do the 50%. Or, you know, you could tie the rules around it however you wanted to, the board wants to. We've not determined that yet. This is just an idea, a proposal, that we wanted to get in front of you. So that's one idea. That when we stopped this, the amount that we were paying was about $179,000. At the time, we were doing a significant amount of doctoral programs, PhD programs, that were costing us a significant amount of dollars. I think that's why it was as high as it was. So I think as we started the program back up, it wouldn't cost us as much. Of course, we would have to increase it every year, and eventually it would cost us. But I think probably $100,000 the first year would get the program rolling.
Thank you for adding that. I was the one that requested this be in there, because we talk about teacher retention, but we, you know, there's a couple of items at the top of the list that deal with teacher retention, but I just thought that encouraging our teachers to go back and get that master's degree to enhance their teaching instead of, and then by virtue of having the master's degree, the 10% is still there from the state that's available. So, you know, I know the state kind of plays with that from time to time, but... So, you know, I know the state kind of plays with that from time to time, but hopefully that will still be the case. But anyway, I just wanted to provide some incentive for teachers to go back and better themselves for the classroom. So I don't know what that might look like. I know that it was in the budget before, and, you know, I was here when it was removed. And in other districts, they do a flat amount per class for the first master's degree, et cetera. So we can put parameters on it however we would like. And also, that last item, are you going to talk about it?
Yeah.
I talked to Joe Gala, and he had mentioned that, you know, as the technology increases on the buses, he's going to need some technician, I think it maybe is in his list, a technician to look at the cameras and to maintenance the cameras, and as we transition all of our buses to the same system, that could be a potential, potentially a split position. So maybe that affects the funding. And I just asked Ms. Klutz to put this in here, just so it didn't slip off our radar. We can kind of move it around how we see fit, but just wanted to make sure that both of those, at least, were discussed in part.
Yeah, I want to add one thing. I think as far as, you know, helping with the reimbursement, I think it has helped us to be able to keep, like Vince said, retain people, and it's also helped us have people in line to take over because they're ready and they got their education. And I think Dr. Probst, didn't y'all have, do that a lot down here? So I know she had a lot to do with getting assistant principals and people like that in line so we could hire within. So I think it's very valuable that we, if any way possible, we keep doing that.
So there are no more discussion about the particular items. I know you wanted, oh, I know you wanted to, do you have discussion about the items before?
No.
Okay, just the priority. Okay. So I know that you wanted to reprioritize the items, so the only ones that are not on your document in board docs are the last two, 21 and 22. So I'll let you lead the discussion on how you want to move the items.
Are there any suggestions? Mr. Harrison?
It's my recollection that earlier in the month, we, last month, we took a vote to move social workers and psychologists to third and fourth positions. Is that still, that was our vote?
No, we didn't vote.
No, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote. We decided not to. We decided to break everything out and then bring it back, and we would move and vote this time.
Okay, so we can still make that priority
Oh, sure.
decision at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And what is the process or the timeline for doing that?
That's what we're doing.
Right here, right now?
Right here, right now.
Okay. At the appropriate time, Mr. Chair, I'll make such a motion.
We'd like to get them all.
If there's any discussion about order, Mr. Harrison obviously has an order in mind. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Or we can have that in the discussion on the motion, and that will shorten our window here.
I'd like to see a couple of the things that have a direct correlation to student achievement moved up, like the planning time for our elementary school teachers and the three assistant principals for at-risk schools. I'd hate to see that, those not get enacted.
Board members, when you talk about these items, would you use the item number to make it easier for us rather than having to scan the whole document?
It's currently item number three and item number, what is it?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thank you.
And my references were item 11 and item 12 currently. And 15 as well.
Could I give a few thoughts on the, on number 15, I guess? I think your question in the previous meeting was, is this delivery model currently working? And I think it was described that it is not currently in use. It's something that is wanted, we are wanting to try to see if this is what we want to do with the service delivery model for the school psychologist. I would, I know that we just increased school psychologists maybe last year, if I remember correctly. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way to sort of pilot, since it's a different delivery method from staff, staff member to child, maybe it's something we could try out on a kind of limited basis to see what kind of feedback we get from that before jumping in with 10 full-time positions. It seems like a kind of a big leap to me.
And just to ask you to share with me your, you know, your own experience and your own professional expertise, which I'll defer to, I really will, why is there any reason to question the efficacy of the plan in your mind? Or the request?
Given my experience at the school level, the school psychologists are invaluable in identifying those students that are struggling to determine whether they're EC or not, or whether there's additional testing needs that need to be taken care of, whether a child is academically gifted or not, and that seems to be the current model that is used in our district. I mean, and so if we're going to, across the board, change that service delivery model from being able to test and to assess whether those children are EC or not, or what other assessments they may need, to a more hands-on delivery model, I think maybe we need a little bit more data behind that, or I wouldn't say experimentation, but maybe a pilot program to see if that's something that the more people at the school level think is valuable. That's kind of my thoughts on that. So in other words, maybe take, take one of the psychologists that we have hired in the recent past and make them more of a hands-on kind of person, as was described in the rationale, and then come back a year from now and see what kind of feedback we're getting from that school, how valuable that is.
Could I get Amy to, Ms. Louder, could you come forward, please?
Hi, thank you.
I just wanted to have you up because you're the subject matter expert in this. Vince has got a proposal, but I wanted to hear what, in his proposal, what makes sense? If we were to break off from the 10, what would make sense for you to execute to be able to give a pilot that would be, you know, something that we could sink our teeth into and say, yeah, this is actually working for us? So that's why I asked you to come forward.
Sure, I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you. I think in looking at the way of the plan for the 10 psychologists for next year, the proposal, the 10 kind of is a pilot to look at that. With the amount that we should have based on the numbers and the recommendation of the National Association of School Psychologists, we should be looking at an additional 40 to 50 positions. So by just having the 10 positions, that would give us enough to start to branch out. I don't think we'd be able to continue what we're doing in the current model that you allude to. I don't know that we'd be able to adequately collect information and see if it's making the impact that we might need. I think if we were to expand it to the 10 positions, that we'd be able to see, and I guess in a sense, spread the wealth out of all the additional activities that we would be doing, because we'd be working with general education students as well as the EC students, exceptional childrens. Does that answer the question? Does that, are there more specific questions or thoughts about that?
Well, I'll open it up, Vince, because I'm, you know, you know more than I know, so I'm having to defer to two people that know a lot more about this than I know.
Right. I would love to think that we would have it available to increase our numbers to the national average for school psychologists, and I just am so rooted in the school, I'm kind of, maybe it's just because I'm more accustomed to what I've been accustomed to, and I don't necessarily hear what other districts necessarily are doing, but I do know that those that impact those schools, that seems like a big figure as far as the number, the amount of money associated with that, in my opinion. That's just kind of, it'd be nice if we could go ahead and put a school psychologist, I guess, in every elementary school, and maybe, you know, double up in middle and maybe even do less than that in high schools, since there maybe is not quite as much need, but I don't know, that's just kind of my experience would be, you know, those that are maybe classroom teachers or TAs possibly being a little bit better use for all of, or some of that money.
If I could also respond, I think also the, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, the, looking at the 10 psychologists, when we look at the evaluation instrument that the school psychologist is using, that ties us into working with all students and kind of opening up all these different things I've talked about the last couple months. Whenever we're not able to do those things, we truly are restricting what the psychologists are supposed to be doing. So if we continue to stay in this assessment model, we really are not going to be able to abide by the national practice model or be able to adequately assess the psychologist with the evaluation instrument that the state has adopted. That's a concern that I have as their supervisor, just being able to open up their skill sets and then carry out the job that is written as it is in the standards and their evaluation instrument.
And I've just got a general feeling that without these skilled professionals in the right role, many kids fall through the cracks. Maybe many more kids fall through the cracks. No, I don't know professionally from your experience or yours, but just my common, ordinary person's point of view is that these positions would do a great deal to help find the needs and identify the needs of children to make them successful in the long run. And that's where I'm coming from. I'd like to stick to the, my thought at least, of moving these up in priority.
When we look at the districts, we're the top, or the 10th in the nation, excuse me, the 10th in the state as far as our size. When we look at ratios from other similar districts, we are well behind where we should be based on the ratio, even taking away the National Association recommendation, but still just being able to serve students, 31,000 students with just the 14 psychologists, it's still very limiting of what we're allowed to do. Having the additional 10 does provide a little bit of expansion to that.
And do you have any numbers on how we are in terms of identified EC students in ratios with other districts around the state? Yeah, I presume the number you were just talking about was system-wide.
Total students, yes.
Total students. But in terms of the identif, I'm trying to say it in an intelligent way, the numbers of our known EC students and the ratio with our current professional staff, do you have any idea quite how we rank in that regard?
I don't know off the top of my head those numbers, but I do know other districts fund differently, so it wouldn't be a direct comparison whenever we've got general education funding and then the number of EC students served. It wouldn't, it would kind of be apples to oranges.
So what I understand you to say is, most of the other districts tend to have psychologists that are devoted to both EC and to general ed, and so the monies are spread out, whereas in our district, we just have them focused on the EC subgroups, and that's it. So that's why we have the 14 to service just that group. Is that, restating it?
It really does vary by the district, by the local education agency, as to how they decide to fund the school psychologist. Whenever, we've talked before, whenever the funding is limited to just the federal funding from exceptional children, that's where we get into these guidelines, that we're only allotted those students to work with.
And that's what the 14 currently are, based on the federal funding only?
If we were to remain under federal funding from exceptional children's program.
And then with the 10, what your suggestion is, or what your proposal is with the additional 10, then you would be able to spread the federal funding out among all 24 psychologists, and the general ed population would then
Have access.
Be able to have access to everybody
Yeah.
rather than just 10.
Against Kelly's wishes, yes. But that would be
But yeah, that would create, you have to keep up with the micromanagement of how they were using their hours to justify the federal
Depending upon if that federal money is used or different funding. If federal money is not, it wouldn't be
We'd have to find a different way to do it, but we would find a different way to do it.
You'd have to have a different costing way of dealing.
We would not do that. We would find, we would find a way to make it work.
Okay. All right.
That gets you in trouble.
Well, we don't have to vote on this tonight. We're just trying to get clarification and understanding, so that was
Next week?
We vote on this budget next week, is that correct?
We do.
Yes.
Is there any way we could get feedback from the schools? I mean, I know we've got Vince's expert opinion, but is it too late in the game to see the value? If they could maybe expound on the value with or without? Is that too late?
So we had significant input from the Budget Committee from the school level, and they prioritized, and they, yeah.
It might be helpful, just for a sanity check for us, is to, you did say that the different districts are using different numbers, but we seem to be well behind the top 10 and I would say probably the top 15. Can you, would it be too much to give us some information as to how we rank in the top 15, if the total population where we might rank ratio-wise?
I should be able to be, provide some of that information. It may be limited for certain districts, but I've got some information already obtained, and then I can contact the state school site consultant to see if I can obtain some more information.
I just think that would help us in understanding, you know, where are we as Cabarrus County in dealing with, and for our general audience, you know, most of our employers offer employee assistant programs, but our students, a lot of times, they're coming from families whose parents might be in an employee assistance program, but we have no way to help the student who is going through exactly the same traumas that the parents are going through, or maybe probably more magnified because of their stage in life. And so this is a round, educating the child and helping the child along psychologically as they deal with the pressures of home life, and then integrating them into an educational system to get them to advance that. So that's, that's what this is all about, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, we can provide what we, what we're able to provide for the students, but, you know, with some sanity check in there as to where do we rate. And if we were at the bottom, then we definitely can have a discussion about how should we do this.
These professional skills in the classrooms, I mean, sorry, in the schools, also take pressures off the teachers who are great at teaching but may not be in their element when they're making these assessments, and can, the school psychologists can make a much more effective determination of a child's need much sooner than the teacher could. So that's another advantage.
And we could also provide the supports to the teachers whenever they do have students that they're not sure how to assist. We can provide that. And also just to highlight the collaborative effort that school psychologists and school social workers and school counselors have, there's a lot of overlap, and being able to support each other in supporting students and families is, I think, the goal of all of our professions.
Okay, but this isn't over, some of those services are overlapped on what we're currently doing or what we currently provide. Like Don, Donnie, you explained some of that last time, if you can explain again.
Yeah, while I fully support the proposal, I'm afraid we have a little misunderstanding, and I'd like to kind of clarify that. There's a lot of mental health assistance going on right now in our schools, and it's somewhat an implication that if we don't fund, and I think against school psychologists in saying this, that we're not meeting needs of kids. And I think that's where we need to go back to currently, we are not staffed that well with school counselors either, or school social workers, but at the same time, we have the folks in the school. And so as we look at trying to evaluate, I don't want to put the schools in a position trying to say one position is more important than another. But I would say that of all your people here, your school counselors are the ones working directly with kids. And that's where the school psychologists will work more with kids as time goes on, but they're primarily, actually, an interviewer with the teacher, and you'll have to clarify that a bit. But what I'm afraid our conversation is saying is that kids are not getting mental health services, and they truly, truly are. Because when it comes to suicidal ideation, those, your counselors are at the forefront for that, and they're the ones that are assigned directly to work, whether it's grade level or teams, or even alphabet at the high school. And so that's why I was very supportive of this concept, but I'd hate to say that we start prioritizing one dimension in student services if we could put that over another because of the overlapping duties. They're complementary positions, and neither one can They're complementary positions and neither one can replace the other, but please know mental health services are being addressed.
My youngest daughter had a friend who had that ideation and I think it has affected her for 10 years because that individual carried it, carried out that ideation.
Yes.
Thank you.
And those needs are continuing to grow.
And they're, and they're real. We all know that. Everyone up here, everyone out here knows they're real. But, um, I'll, I'll stop there.
I'd like to, I'd like, I don't know if we make a motion or just, I, I agree with Rob to move the middle school administrators for the at-risk to number four, I think, and...
I'll second that.
I don't know if, is it, is that the most efficient way to, yeah, okay.
Move number 13 to number four. Is that, is that what I understood?
Number 13.
I almost put that ahead of the funding, the salary increases and the reason because if they don't get the salary increases, then nothing else happens.
I, I don't, I don't think I agree with that, but it's, but I don't know that we have to hash that out right now, or do we?
Need to arrive at a.
I mean, I think it needs, I think it needs a higher priority. Um, and I understand the, the point both ways, but the issue here is, you know, again, it's county, it's county funding.
I had, I had a motion to move number 13 to number four and that was Mr. Powell and seconded by Mr. Phil, by Dr. Phillips. So that is the motion on the table. We can now begin some more discussion on that. Rob, you've, you've discussed, you have some more?
Yeah, my discussion was, can we move it, should we move it up even higher so it, make sure it happens.
Any more discussion on moving that item, number 13, up to number four? All right, not hearing any discussion, let's call for the vote. All in favor of moving number 13 up to number four? That is, number 13 is the increasing of three assistant principal positions for at-risk middle schools, moving that up to position number four, which within.
I'm sorry, can I withdraw that motion? It's better than voting against it, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, I was just going through this elaborate clarification.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you may.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Will you withdraw your second?
No, I will.
Okay.
I, I would, I, I think it should go above the increase in elementary teacher allotment, actually, so move it to number three. And then, because, Rob got me thinking, what if things don't get funded and what if they do get funded and that's the last thing, I think that might be more important than increasing the, the elementary teacher allotment by 25.
All right, I have a motion now to move number 13 to number three. Do I have a second?
Second, okay.
All right, Mr. Walter, so let me just change that. All right, any more discussion on moving number 13 up to position number three and sliding the others down? All right, not hearing any more discussion. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Motion carries, Ms. Monroe, six zero. All right, we've done one. Any other motions to move any of the budget items in this list to other, other positions?
If I may, Ms. Smith, would you weigh in on the guidance councils, counselors, social workers and psychologist positions so that I've got a clear sense from staff? Should they, they remain in the positions they're in, in this prioritization, or should they be bumped up? Uh, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, um...
Could I just say, well, I appreciate, respect the board for their position and you, you guys and lady, when she's present, can move anything you want to. Please remember that there was an awful lot of work put into this, an awful lot of time. Um, so I think with, with every move that you make, um, there's kind of a discounting of the, the value of the time that we have spent, um, in budget committee. So you very well may have great intention and, and it may be the right thing to do, but just please remember that, um, there was a significant amount of time and a lot of folks that, um, invested, uh, the time in, in the committee.
And I respect that and we just took a vote to move, uh, assistant principals for at-risk middle schools up to a higher position. And it seems to me that these, uh, again, I don't know the perfect combination of social workers, counselors and psychologists, um, that those, um, positions would augment and support and back up the, um, assistant principals at, at-risk middle schools. It sounds like it would, um, but am I just, am I confused? Help me out. Why, why do we have these positions in, in this prioritization, I mean, this list to begin with unless we can align them, um, so that they're most effective?
Okay, I think I hear the question being, I'm trying to think how to word that.
I plainly didn't do it very well, so help me out.
As Amy described, the positions you're talking about are all complementary positions because each one carries a different function. But I think your question is coming back, if we're prioritizing assistant principals at higher need schools, should we be looking at a different way in these positions that complement themselves because the needs are great in those schools? And for that, I would agree with that. Uh, currently we are not based, our formula driven on an at-risk formula for these positions that we're talking about. And Kelly will have to correct me on that. We do that in some other areas, but we don't do that with school psychology. We don't do that with school counselors or school social workers. We're just on that ratio of one per so many students. So if we truly believe that the needs are great at that school, then our staffing would need to reflect that. I would agree. And that's how I would answer that because of the, the complementary roles these positions play.
And, and it's, we would love, we've looked at, um, addressing the formulas based, based on risk over the, the last several years, but to do that, um, without taking away from another school, you have to have more funds and more positions. And so, uh, since 2007, 2008, we've not had any additional positions. We've been lucky to hold on to what we've had or, or reduced. So while we, we have entertained the idea of, of adding risk to assistant principals, um, but when you're dealing with the same pot, you have to take away from somebody else to give to somebody. And so that's why we've not ultimately decided to add an at-risk factor to the assistant principal allotment. Certainly if you add positions here, then that helps resolve the problem. And we can do it on risk.
So you're suggesting adding yet another position to that request, maybe to nine or whatever it was, what was the number?
No, I'm saying this helps us with what we've looked at in the past.
Can we put parameters on positions that we approve? Could we say we approve three at, or however many at-risk positions and if approved, change the, uh, way positions are allocated based on at-risk factors? Can we put that parameter on those positions?
I think the way that it's written here, that's what you're doing.
Well, that's, that's true. And one other point that, yes, the budget, budget committee met and I was at every single meeting, we had, we had a great time. But a lot of these items were not broken up in the way that they are now, so we didn't know that at, at-risk and regular middle school positions, so, um, you know, and also the teaching positions at the top, they weren't broken down in that way and some of the others have been modified some. So there's new information for the board members that we, as longtime budget committee members, did not have. So I understand your frustration with all of that, but they're, they're getting new informations at times.
Can I just say, I was trying to sit here and think of how, how best to say as I hear the discussion and, and reiterate, um, a lot of what Ms. Klutz said, which is the, the risk, I think, when we're doing this is you have lots of needs in lots of different areas and you can, you can talk about the need for assistant principals at middle school, but if there were a group of high school principals here, they would say, well, we have a need also. And if they're, and it'd be like, wow, yeah, that, that's, I agree, and you, you may move that around. And then you may have a group of elementary principals that would say, can you think about this part of that? And so there's this, whatever the issue is that's discussed, sounds like it's really important, you know, and, and they're all important. But the further you move away from that process, when there was a lot of representation in the room, where it can be, wow, yeah, we have a, a 25-minute discussion about psychologists and then we make a decision on that, but we could have had a 25-minute discussion on every topic in there and every time we move one, we're moving farther away from what we decided in that process. And so I would just try to reiterate to say, keep that in mind each time as we go because you can have the hot button of the day or you can have the eloquent speaker or you can have someone speaking from that group that will really influence it and then that moves us further away from as objective as we can be with a process that has tons and tons of need. So, um, I just want to reiterate and say that again, really, really think about that because when you do that, then the committee just kind of thought, okay, well, so we spent an hour and a half talking about that in the committee meeting and came to this decision. We could have come to another one, but this is the one we came to. So when we made that move, we just negated that discussion and that may be appropriate because this is the school board and you make the final decision, but it does make that, you could do that a hundred times probably in the process. And so I would just say, think about that a lot because when you do that, there's always a ripple effect on the other side and a discussion that went into a pretty long thought, thoughtful process when we got there.
I want to ask, we have counselors, we have social workers and we have psychologist positions. All of those are funded either, well, the psychologist is, right now, the only way it's funded is through the federal money. We've got 14. Guidance counselors are funded in which ways? Through state dollars? So when we grow, we add counselors, is that correct?
So it's, it, there's a pot of money from the state that's called instructional support. Um, we as a, a system our size do not get enough instructional support, same way as we do not get enough teachers, same way as we don't get enough clerical. So we supplement our instructional support. So, um, we have locally paid instructional support and we have state-paid instructional support. I would say most of our, um, instructional support are state-paid. Um, and so I heard Donna chuckle, um, because you said, we, when we grow, do we add, um, positions? So since, you know, the fall of the economy, we have not been able to add positions because we've been in a position where we cut six and seven million dollars and everything that we've done is absorbed growth in, in all these cuts that the state.
So let, let's get that so that people understand. When you say, when the fall of the economy, we cut the budget for 2011 and 12, right? That's when we cut eight million dollars out of the budget.
I think it wasn't, it was close to seven, wasn't it? I think it was.
It was seven million?
Yeah.
All right, so since 2011, 12, we have not added counselors.
I think we have, not, not a one.
And we've grown from 28,000 or so to nearly 31,000. So we've added 3,000 students, let's just say, for sake of argument, and we've added no counselors to augment that. Now, social workers, is that the same situation?
Right.
And when was the last time we added social workers?
Yeah, we socialized the last year to accomplish.
Right.
One.
One, so we've had one since 2011, 12, and we've added 3,000, close to 3,000 students. Okay. I just, I just want, I want our board to get a perspective of what does this mean so that you can understand, we're growing really rapid and we're not adding the, we're not adding the personnel that augment the process.
And, and that's true in all of our areas.
And that's the tension that's going on here. And now we're asking for local money to help us in this endeavor.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I can, uh, move it along a little bit, uh, move that items 11 and 15 be moved to positions four and five and ask for a second.
I have, I have a motion, motion, I have a motion from Mr. Harrison to move 11 and 15 to what positions?
Four and five.
Four and five, so we will now move, uh, so elementary teacher allotment will be at number, no, that one will be moved down again. So starting at elementary school allotment or elementary teacher allotment down, all of those will get moved down two points, right? Two positions? That's your motion? Because elementary school, elementary teacher allotment got moved down to position four and now we want to move it down two more notches. Is that what your motion is?
I'll, I'll take position seven and eight, if you will, please.
Okay, okay. I'm just, okay, wait a minute, let me, well, let me see what seven and eight happens. I have to read this list. Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Renumber them.
Seven, okay, so.
It's gonna renumber them.
So basically you're asking to move increased high school guidance counselors, summer work hours, ratchet that down one, two, and provide adequate planning, all that. Everything below number six, as you see it on the screen now, will move down two and we will take number 11 and number 15 and move that into those positions. Do I have that correct? Did anybody see my arithmetic or my movement?
All right, now that they're renumbered, what do you want to do?
All right, what? Okay, so. Keep it still.
Keep it still.
Freeze, freeze.
You, you can, you can remove, um, the highlighting from number, what is now number 13. Um, it's in reference to texting features for social workers. Um, I apologize for confusing matters earlier.
What is it you wanted to do with 13?
He doesn't want that.
Okay.
12 and number 15, I believe.
12 and 15. And they're gonna go up here to number seven, right?
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. 12 and 15 to seven and eight. All right, I have a motion to move 11 and 15, well, 12 and 15 or whatever it is. You're moving psychologists and counselors up to?
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. I don't have a, do I have a second? Uh, well, if there is no second, then this motion will die lack of a second.
And do.
So, all right, so, Mr. Harrison, your motion did not receive a second, so we'll move on. All right, any more changes, board members?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure it's, it requires a change, but I, I brought up this, the, the last review, um, position number 20, the clerical position for the construction processing. I mean, I, I understand why it's way down there compared to everything else, but the reality is we're building a new school, we need this. So is there some other way we can make it happen?
Yes, um, that is, if you, um, would like to move that over to the continuation items and we're going to discuss, um, some construction items in, in our discussion of continuation on page 20, Ed's pulled it up for us, you see, um, where we're gonna be asking for a provision to add the principal early at Odell. And, um, we're also gonna be adding, um, asking for additional funds for the assistant principal and the support staff for the school level. We could certainly move it over into that area if you're comfortable with that. Um, it, what happens is these are continuation costs, these are costs that would come before any expansion costs. And so the, the likelihood that it would be funded is a whole lot more likely than it would be if it were in the expansion. We would do the continuation first and then the expansion. And so, um, that was a suggestion, um, of some other staff, but because it's my position, I don't want to, I want to be very upfront and transparent about it and, um, certainly I would appreciate it if you would do that, um, but certainly that's your decision.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we move the item, current item number 20 in the expansion budget. budget to the continuation budget.
Clerical position for construction to the construction budget.
To the continuation.
Continuation budget.
Yes.
What did we do when we were building schools prior?
Sorry, what did we do?
Did we have a second position? Did we get rid of it? What is...
We did have, in previous years, a construction position. It was an accountant position. That position was absorbed into, into the department. In, when I started here in 2001, we had two more positions than we have now. So with that position, so that...
So we did have a position?
We did, we have had a construction position before. Certainly, Ed does some of the, some of the higher-level accounting positions, the construction stuff. This is more of the accounts payable, you know, paying the invoices, the, the furniture invoices, all of those types of things that I would not want an accountant to do, a higher-paid accountant. This is a, a part-time clerical, accounts payable position.
So in other words, it's saving money, saving money, or what it's saving?
It's certainly saving.
Or offsetting, or...
It's certainly saving significant dollars as opposed to the way that it was.
Because if, if this is not funded, you're going to have higher-paying folks do the work, is that what?
We, we, we've not done this work, you know, for multiple years. So somebody's going to have to do it, and I assume it's going to have to come out of overtime. I don't, I don't know how otherwise it would be done.
Okay. All right. Folks, we have a motion to move the clerical position to continuation. Dr. Phillips made the motion, Mr. Harrison seconded it. Any more discussion on this? If not, let's go to vote. All in favor of moving the clerical position to the continuation budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Motion carries six oh, so we move that position over to your continuation, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So now we're going into continuation items and those, this, oh, no, 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 sorry, I've skipped over. We did not have any changes on the facility's operational expansion request. We reviewed that, and you didn't have any changes. And we provided some more justification on the health and safety increase. I'm going to give Ed just a minute to catch up with me. So if you have any questions about that, certainly we'll address those. We have the staff here. Mr. Taylor's here, if, if you have any questions. But we provided that to you in advance, and I think we were able to get those questions answered for you. And then the grounds expansion also, you didn't have any moves or anything, and we didn't have any questions as follow-up items on, on that particular item either.
Do we have that on our presentation here?
You do. It's, Ed actually has it in front of you now. So that's the grounds. Right, it didn't change. You, you didn't have any concerns or questions, so you didn't indicate that you wanted to move anything. Unless you've changed your mind.
I had, I had a little bit of concern with the soil and water conservation positions.
Okay. And Mr. Taylor talked with you?
I, I talked to Mr. Taylor to explain, he explained, you know, the purpose of it, how it would save us, potentially save us money. But I, you know, again, this is a continuing expense if you add people, is that right?
That's correct.
And prior last year, we allocated, I guess it was the same amount of money, but it was on a one-year basis.
What happened is we requested additional dollars for this particular thing, but we did not get any additional dollars in this budget.
That's not what I understood. I thought we had money to, to do.
So let me, let me keep them. So what happened was, because we didn't get any of these additional dollars, we, this is a required expense, we had to, we had to do this maintenance, or we would have been fined, and we would have had significant issues. So there were project dollars in this budget. And so what the county had agreed to allow us to do was instead of use, take project dollars and use them for projects, one-time expenses, we used those project dollars for ongoing, reoccurring, normal maintenance items. And so we use those project items, dollars, for that type of expense.
All right. That was my understanding. From what I saw, it was $150,000 specifically for the, the retention ponds and detention ponds and what have you.
That was the request.
But that's what we did, I think.
Pardon?
That's what we ended up doing.
That's what we took out of the project funds.
Okay. I think I'd rather do a one allocated on a year, by year basis instead of adding personnel. I mean, that's just my preference. But again, I mean, I understand that, I understand the point, I understand why we need, we should have these people, but it's just, you know, it's a, just have a, have a difficulty with, with hiring folks in this area, in this specialty. You're taking money out of classrooms, basically. I mean, that's...
Do you want Mr. Taylor to come up?
No, I don't need Mr. Taylor to come up. I've, I've had the, had the discussion. I certainly understand his position, and, and he's looking to save us money, and he's looking, and he showed me the, the needs here, and we certainly have needs for these, to, to make these repairs. But there's, you know, there ought to be some better way that we could do, work with other agencies or something than, than to have to spend $150,000 a year to fix ponds.
Are, are we the only entity in the county, government entity, that, that has to do this kind of work? Is there a possibility of sharing essentially with, with other, you know, city or counties?